I call this city meeting to order this regular meeting of the City Commission of Rio Grande City, Texas, Wednesday, April 13th, 2016, approximately 6:01 PM here in Commission Chamber, City Hall, 5332 East US Highway 83, Suite A, Rio Grande City, Texas. This time can we have Commissioner Ramirez lead us with the invocation followed by Commissioner Garza with the pledge of allegiance.
As far as heads, family father, we ask you to please allow us to, in a productive meeting in an orderly fashion, we ask you to please guide us and use the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the city, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Texas has a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, Texas, one nation, God, one indivisible.
Ms. Guerrero, will you please do roll call in finding a quorum?
Thank you. Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Chingrassa.
Here.
Commissioner Vasquez.
Here.
Commissioner Gil.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. First up, our next business in orders, item 1C, reading of proclamation, April is Fair Housing Month. Rio Grande City proclamation, whereas Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it is a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States of America. And whereas, the principle of fair housing is not only national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas, the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore, I, Juell Villarreal, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in Rio Grande City, Texas, and do hereby urge all citizens of this locality to become aware of and support the Fair Housing Law. Next business in order is item 1D, reading of proclamation, April is Alcohol Awareness Proclamation Alcohol Awareness Month 2016, talk early, talk often, parents can make a difference in teen alcohol use. Whereas alcohol is a primary factor in the four leading causes of death for young persons of ages 10 to 21, and whereas alcohol is the most commonly used addictive substance in the United States, and whereas young people who begin drinking before age 15 are four times more likely to develop alcohol dependence than those who begin drinking at age 21. And whereas, the typical American will see 100,000 beer commercials before he or she turns 18, and whereas kids who drink are more likely to be victims of violent crime, to be involved in alcohol-related traffic crashes, and to have serious alcohol-related problems, and whereas a supportive family environment is associated with lower rates of alcohol used for adolescents, and whereas consistent and sustained parental attitudes can influence a child's decision about whether or not to use alcohol and drugs. And whereas kids who have conversations with their parents and learn a lot about the dangers of alcohol and drug use are 50% less likely to use alcohol and drugs than those who don't have such conversations. Now therefore, I, Juell Villarreal, by the authority vested in me as mayor of Rio Grande City, Texas, now join the National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependence Incorporated and SCAN Incorporated, and do hereby proclaim that April 2016 is Alcohol Awareness Month in Rio Grande City. As a mayor of Rio Grande City, I also call upon all citizens, parents, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, hospitals, schools, and colleges in Rio Grande City to support efforts that will provide early education about alcoholism and addiction, and increase support for individuals and families coping with alcoholism. Through these efforts, together we can provide hope, help, and healing for those in our community who are facing challenges with alcohol use and abuse. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed on this day, first day of April 2016. Next business in order is 1E Departmental Reports. Ms. Reyes.
Mayor.
Sorry, before we continue, I know there was, north of Ms. Garza in the audience, I don't know if you wanted to add something to that proclamation.
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead, Ms. Go ahead, Ms. Apologize.
Thank you for the confirmation. I think that the city is very supportive of our issue for mainly do drug prevention and I think our chief, Nomi Katsi, are also mainly part of our coalition and under strength intervention. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Appreciate it. Ms. Reyes.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, we've got a busy month coming up in April. We, you have a calendar of the events, and I know we've already initiated several projects in the city. I do want to call on Mr. Klein as the Public Utilities Director. We started the digital meter conversion. The crew has been going, you know, quite fast. I know they have a number of digital meters, which Mr. Klein will report now.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
As today, we already installed 2,175 digital meters. We had a little problem with our software. We could not get the data in there. We put in manually, but we should be alright for this month.
You said 2,000?
2,175.
And we have to install a customer, how many, 5,800 or 6,000?
It'd be 5,160.
Okay.
I do want to thank the community, you know, they've been very patient in this transition. There are about approximately 30 books that are meter read on a monthly basis by the crew. It takes about two weeks. This will substantially cut the time where all 5,000 and some accounts will be read in a day. So that...
Looking forward to that, Mr. Ramirez.
It gives our crew time to go back and to do connections and leaks. We are growing, and so this will help this department keep up with the demands. I also want to call upon the fire department because we also initiated the fire house, firehouse calls with the accidents, and we've had a good response, and our fire chief will report. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We started the fire recovery software since February. We've been doing other reports. We started in February, February, March, and I believe we're up to $2,000, $3,000 almost in reimbursement. It does take a little process because of the fact that, you know, we had to receive the claim and then reimbursing, sometimes the insurance companies might be able to, you know, retract it back in case of something, but they're keeping track of it. We report to the finance department on a monthly basis how much is actually being collected and things like that, so it's been pretty good for the first two months.
How's it coming along with the false alarms?
Right now, we haven't gotten that many. When we go out there, we make sure we notify the businesses that this is what's happening now. I do want to get with Christine or Christian to make an informational report on the TV that that's what's happening now, trying to reduce the calls on false alarms and things like that, so. But as of February, we're doing pretty good on the response and reimbursement on the calls and things like that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I also want to call on Sarah Hernandez on our tourism. She and Diana have been working with Ms. Rebecca Flores, who presented at the last meeting for the 50th anniversary of the United Farm Workers. We will, we're very excited because we're going to be having some, actually, some celebrities, and I'll let you say who the person that's coming in.
Yes. We have been meeting with Rebecca, I know that she was here at the last meeting, and we met with her, I believe, the following day after the meeting, so we started to discuss some of the details and some of the events that we want to incorporate this event. So it's going to start at the Britton Kiosk on Britton, and she has some presenters there. I know she invited Dolores Huerta to be there to speak. I know that she has a good following, so we're hoping to get a good attendance at this event and exposure. And after the program that's going to go on at the kiosk, we are trying to find a way to have a march from the kiosk to the Tijerina for a lunch. So today, we actually had a meeting to discuss with the police department and fire department how we would go about getting some of the people from that event to the Tijerina, and also we have some elderly, so in consideration of them, we asked EDC to lend us the trolley to transport some of those who are unable to march, because we want them to also participate in the event. And once they finish the lunch, there will also be a program there, they're going to be able to go into the Kelsey Bass for a display. We're going to have our first official museum display at the Kelsey Bass on June 1st. So, we're really excited.
The United Farm Worker Movement had already started in California, but in Texas, the movement did not officially start until June 1st, 1966, and it started here in Starr County. So it was a big win in civil rights movement for this group of people, and it'll be the 50-year commemoration, which I think they were very much well-deserved this, and we're doing everything to make this event come in. Ms. Dolores Huerta, we're hoping to have a meet and greet the day before. You know, she's a very active, community activist throughout the national levels.
Before maybe any type of plaque or anything?
Yes.
We're working on that.
I know that you had mentioned, she said that you had mentioned about a photo for the plaque to include a photo, so that is something that we're, I know we, we were looking into using the same person who did some of the work for us at the anniversary park, and see if they could also include that photo, and so that, you know, there's no scratching or anything, they could put some type of cover on it, and that's something that we would put near the kiosk.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
You do have a calendar.
You can let the community know about the event, try and get it out there.
You do have a calendar of the events. I know tomorrow they have an art walk, it'll be at the Kelsey Bass, and they're getting up for the Annual Rabies Clinic on the 23rd at the kiosk, that is subsidized by the city in conjunction with, working with Dr. Margul. You also have the Crime Stoppers on the 16th, that's doing their fundraiser, and that'll be at the Buffalo Fairgrounds. The Dia de Niño activities are coming up. I know Library is working with the STC and other organizations, and boys and girls are working already with their summer program and trying to get the Gus and Goldie Program running in the summer. Other departments are ongoing also with their events, collaborating with the other departments. We just have a very busy month coming up. You do have the reports in the packet, and they are present if you have any questions or if you want additional information on anything that was presented.
Any other director would like to address the commission? Please feel free this time. Go ahead, Ms. Guerrero.
I have a bit additional to my report. And hopefully by next week, we're going to start working on the Rafuque area drainage improvement projects, so we can get started with that one. And Chief Castillo and I are going to create a traffic study on Charco Blanco, we can place some three-way stop signs also, so we can eliminate all these high speeders out there, make them hold, you know, to slow down a little bit. So Chief Castillo and I are going to be creating that traffic study, Mayor and City Council, just so that you all know.
How many street lights are we up to now, Chi, up there?
Mayor, we're close to 100 street lights right now.
100?
100, yes, sir. So hopefully we'll get an additional 50 or 100 more.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Quick question, I know I've treated you on the project here on Gossan Street, so sidewalks are going to be removed.
Oh, okay.
What's the status on that? We're still, I find also to...
That one, we're going to be waiting on, for the engineer, do we have some design on the sidewalks, things like that?
The last conversation was to get the waiver from Ms. Hernandez as far as her fencing, and to coordinate with the Laborde on their traffic for the alley.
I had a conversation with her recently a couple of days ago, and she's just waiting for that letter to sign off on it, so we can move this project.
Okay, sir. We'll take care of it.
Thank you, Fernando. We'll quickly, Mayor, just want to say that every year, the, well, for the past four years, the city hosts the VIDA program at the Kelsey Bass, and this year, we had the IRS come down and monitor the proceedings. This is an IRS certified program, and I want to say that Lourdes, being the site coordinator, received a 100 from the IRS because everything was being conducted in accordance. This is not something that is done unofficially, everything is certified by the IRS, so thank you, Lourdes, for maintaining a site and helping people. This was free income tax service. And also, I know that Mr. Morales and Mr. Enrique Casas finished their study with, as state naturalists. We should be attending their graduation in West Look on the 28th, as state certified naturalists, being able to identify the areas, natural flora and fauna. So congratulations to them also.
Congratulations, Ramirez. How many people did we end up servicing through that VIDA program?
It was like 92?
92.
And in total refunds? In total refunds? Oh, gosh, I think we're in the 200,000. 200, came back.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you. That's it on the departmental reports, and if anyone else has some additional questions?
Mrs. Reyes, I inquired regarding the lift stations, and I've been notified that there's a delay with the other engineers, and we need to touch base with them and find out where there's points exactly, because it's delaying some of the other projects that are, that need to be finished.
That was discussed on our recent trip to Austin. They did send the additional information that was required, and we are following up with the engineers, sir.
Okay. For a couple, right, on that particular project, that lift station that was in question, that was the only one that was the latest project, so what was the next step to try to get that?
There's specific engineering questions that the engineer from Texas Water Department Board requested of the firm, Melton Hunt, and they need to respond to those comments from...
Because the question that came up last time was, why not start with the other lift stations and leave that one to the end? Once we resolve that issue there, then we can come back and fix them at the end. Or does that have to be a package deal to where they're all going out, you know, for bids and all that same thing?
No, sir. That was one of the questions we did ask when we were up in Austin, and two of the lift stations can go out for bids and not, and wait for the other one to finish its climate period.
That was a concern, especially the one with Garcia, I mean, it's a bad smell out there, we need to get that one fixed immediately, and it seemed like this other project, lift station was holding us back, so we needed to get this other two moving faster than the not, so.
Is the property ours or whatever?
Yes, sir. It is.
Have we seen, has planning seen any plans on the, on those lift station projects?
I know that Mr. Klein did review the plans with the engineer, we had several meetings with him. There is a discussion between it, there are submersible pumps or the self-priming pumps, which are the pumps that are on top, and those are the ones that Mr. Klein is recommending, and that is for the safety of the utility workers.
Yeah. This time, let's go ahead and move on. Chief Castillo, I know we have a function with the Crime Stoppers.
Yes, sir. We have a function Saturday with Crime Stoppers at the Buffalo Park here, the Colorine Dash, and that's sponsored by Crime Stoppers and the Police Department. They've been working on that for a while, and it's the first annual, so we're really excited about it. I know we had a lot of people sign up for it, and, you know, we're going to see how it turns out this year, and, you know, usually our first events turn out to be a little bit small, and then they get big as the years progress, so I invite everybody to sign up and see us there, meet us there. You know, they can register at the police department, and there's other locations that they can register, and, you know, it should be fun, but we're white shirt, we'll be coming out there with different colors, so, you know, it should be real fun this weekend. Hopefully we'll have good weather.
That's the Saturday?
The Saturday, starts at 8 o'clock. Should be interesting.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Any other department head that would like to add any additional comments to your reports? Anything else, Ms. Reyes?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, let's move on to item 2, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, however, if discussion is desired, the items will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items A, B, and C under 2, which is departmental travel request, minutes from previous meetings, and approval of EDC action from meeting of April 13th, which just happened earlier today. Have any?
Unless anyone wants to take any of the items out of the consent?
I'm opposed to items A, B, and C.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items A, B, and C. Do we have a second? Have a second? Any further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is item 3A, ordinances, first reading approval of ordinance number 2016-5, petition for voluntary annexation by Rio Vista Development for a 7.274 acre tract, tract of land.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is on 3167, right behind what will be the Medina Electric. I know Mr. Milan had the meeting with the Planning and Zoning, which approved this action. Mr. Milan?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, citizens. This is a 7.27 acre tract of land known as Vista Norte Residential Subdivision now, just north of the DPS offices, and so actually it's been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's gone through the extensive inspections, but it's ready for your also approval.
There in?
Residential subdivision.
Residential. This is right behind our next item, the Medina Electric offices, just north of the DPS office now.
Entertain the motion on this. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Also in the motion.
Have a second? Any further discussion? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? She carries. Next is 3B, first reading and approval of ordinance number 2016-6, petition for voluntary annexation by Rio Vista Development for a 3.870 acre tract of land. Go ahead.
Yes, as I said before, again, similar tract of land, 7.87 acres, where it's going to be the Medina Electric co-op offices, future building, again, it went through the subdivision process, one lot, commercial, just north of the DPS office.
It's a commercial tract, and it shows how the developers, they want to be inside the city, so they're asking for the petition to be inside city limits.
Correct. It's going to be serviced by the city, the service services.
It was approved by Planning and Zoning, as we can see here.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll send one, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is item 4, Resolutions, letter A, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2016-8, finalizing election judges for May 7th, 2016 election.
Mayor and Commissioners, previously, there were two election officers that had been approved. They have seen since requested or stated that they will no longer be able to serve, therefore they have a resolution that's a handout naming persons that will take their place. Is how you get rid of? It was in the, in the bottom. Did you even have this one?
Alex, do we manage here, back to the point? Shall we manage? That's all right? Oh, okay, sir.
Yes. Yes, sir.
These, they do have experience, Ms. Guerrero?
Yes.
Okay. So they've been election judges before and so, okay. And do we entertain a motion?
I'll send one.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is item 4B, discussion is...
I'm sorry, sir. Before we go to the resolution on the, for the resale of properties, we need to go to item number 7 for the discussion. This is in accordance with the property laws.
Okay, so if no one objects, we'll be moving over to item 7A. You said 7A?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No objection? Moving over to 7A. City managers' report.
Yes, sir. We've got Mr. Gus Martinez with Linebarger, Golden, Blair, and Simpson, they are the delinquent tax attorneys, and they just held a resale auction, and Mr. Martinez is here to present and discuss. You do have in your package the properties that were for sale.
Good evening, Mayor. Honorable officials. Bid of a resale on January 12th. A resale basically is what it sounds like. It's properties we've tried to sell before and haven't been able to, haven't gotten a bid on. So at the resale, the statute allows us to accept the highest bid. So we bring these to you for your consideration, to see if you want to accept these bids and put these properties back on the tax roll. That's the advantage. They've been 10, 12 years, nobody paying taxes on them. So even though you're taking a little bit less money, whoever buys it, you hope is going to be a bona fide person, and he's going to pay taxes, maybe improve it. Now, you can also decline these if you want, but try and sell them again, of course, that's not a problem, at no expense to the city. We do have about 40 lots spread throughout the city. There's individual photos of each, there's the bid of each, there's a map. I will say that one bid is interesting enough, because it's 25 lots, Los Olmos addition. It's a...
It's in the creek.
It's a...
It's actually in the creek.
It's in a flood zone, yeah, so, I mean, I know that the county tabled that one for further, I guess, review, so, but all the rest have a, have a bid by someone who is not currently delinquent on any of the property that they own.
That, that property that's on the north end, is that inside the, have you looked, have you looked at it?
On the north end of...
It's in the flood, it's in the flood.
On the property that he's talking about?
Los Olmos?
On the north end of the Arroyo.
Where the road ends in the, in the Arroyo, it's the property right on the north end of that.
Right on, right on the other side of the Arroyo. Is that, is that inside city limits?
It, it is being assessed by the city.
Yes, it is. It is, sir.
This is right behind them in Beach Ever Lake.
At the end of Pine Street.
Remember old lots that got, they were picked up by...
It was during the Los Olmos project, they got relocated.
How many lots? I was at the county meeting, you said there was 26 lots?
It's, we have two, two different lawsuits, because there are two different owners. The lots are lot 6 through 11, Block 10, lots 1 through 14, Block 9, and lots 1 through 11, 1 through 8, Block 11. So, it's about 20 to 23 lots.
You, you actually have a block that covers the creek bed?
Yes.
And then the other lots are north of... And then the other lots are north of that, it is in the flood zone. Any construction, you know, would not be able to be permitted in that area. Not only is it in a flood zone and in the creek bed, it is also part of the Los Olmos watershed project, so.
So it's one of those two, and the bid was eleven hundred dollars, so that's not a lot, and it seems like a low bid, but the advance...
Is it branch line value?
It's, uh, it's value, it's appraised value?
Well, it's branch line, I would imagine.
Yeah, it's not a, each lot's appraised probably like about six, five hundred dollars, yeah, so it seems a very low bid, but if you figure, if you accept it, the person has to pay the taxes on it next year, so you start earning money instead of just having to sit there, but we can try and sell it again for more, of course.
So this is already came in?
Yeah, we've got the money and everything, we've got the money for all these bids and everything.
They, they need to be approved by the taxing entities before they...
Right, and that's when the resolution comes in, because since these are resales and the bids are less than what is appraised at, there needs to be a resolution attached accepting the bid.
And this is the second time they were put up for auction?
At least, some of them are three, four, yeah.
Now, Mr. Martinez, in the delinquent tax balance that we have from the past years, if these transactions are approved, then that balance is reduced because this are taken off of the delinquent tax rules.
Exactly, right now, they're essentially, when you first try to sell property after you've foreclosed on it, if nobody bids on it, or you don't get the bid that's required, then it gets struck off. Basically, it goes into trust, the school, city, SEC, and the county hold it as trust, and it stops being assessed. So you're not making any money off these properties right now, it's just adding more and more to the debt.
Is that gonna get it off the list?
Yeah, yeah, it's...
So, so what happens, you, you put it up for a rebid?
If, if you don't accept the bid on either one of these properties, we will put them up again for resale. I think we're having, we're having a tax sale, I think in June, and a resale in October, November. We always have a, a sale three times a year, and then whatever that didn't sell, we throw them into a resale, and this is one of the occasions.
Okay, let's suppose that we take the bid, and the county wants to, you're saying that the county tabled it?
They tabled it, yes.
What if the county wants to rebid it?
Any entity can deny it, and the bid dies. So I mean, SEC could deny it, and the bid dies. You could approve it, SEC could deny it, and the bid dies. That's how the statute is written, every entity has to approve it. We also sell property as is. The statute doesn't require us to do any surveys or any, or any type of research in terms as to whether the property's viable or not, it's sold as is.
The property was planted in nineteen twenty-seven, so they were, you actually had lots planted across the creek back then, and that's why they're being taxed as individual property lots, even though it's in a flood zone, you know, it's, it's hard for anyone to build anything there other than, like you said, ranch land, no taxes have been collected, like you said, there's a substantial amount, we're not getting anything, it's already, it's been already bid it out twice.
And there were similar properties, like there's some in here where there's a structure that's dilapidated and, and might be a health problem, I mean, so it's really up to the city, we have no problem trying to sell it again. We, we advertise at the courthouse, and in, in the paper, and we'll also put a sign on the property, so it's, we can, we can do more if you, if you like, but...
I'm trying to understand the, the bid here, I'm trying to read the document here, it states that the cost of the sale is seven thousand.
Yes.
Amount of bid, six hundred dollars.
Yes.
And the current appraisal value of the property is fifty-nine thousand, so...
That's...
Final sale price on bid, six hundred dollars or seven thousand dollars?
Like the bid?
No, it's, it's, the bid is six hundred dollars, the cost of sale, seven thousand, that's, that's basically all the court costs, all the, all the time we put up for sale, hiring a constable, that's, that's, we've probably sold that property about three or four times already, or tried to anyway. So that's, that's the, and every time we sell a property, we do accrue those, those expenses, yeah.
But the six hundred dollars was the highest bid?
That was the highest bid.
So he'll get it for six hundred dollars plus the other additional expenses?
Yeah.
Wow.
Now, whether it's appraised at that amount, whether that's a valid appraisal, I don't know.
Well, you're looking at about fourteen lots yourself.
Yeah.
More than about fifteen thousand.
So he'll be on the hook, he better be on the hook for paying those taxes every year now. And given your tax rate, it'll generate a couple grand in the city.
This time, the staff does recommend approval, Ms. Beas?
The only reason I'm recommending approval there is because it will be removed from our delinquent tax balance, the attempts have been made several times, the cost associated with bidding it out increases also, it just keeps on being compounded. We are right now at one point two in delinquent tax balance, and we need to reduce it, it helps our financial, you know, status to have a low or to decrease our delinquent balance. The attempts have been made, obviously, this land, it would be very hard, and I know our planning directors here for it, to get in any way developed other than ag use.
Right.
So the, the tax revenue that would come from any development is, is minimal.
Okay. Mayor, I hope that we go with the recommendation, we accept the bid.
I'll send, I'll send a motion.
Okay, we go back to item four B, if there's no objection, which is the Discussion and Possible Action to Approve, the Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash nine, Approving the Bids Received on Tax Resale Property, Resale Properties and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Resale Deeds. And we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next, we have item, continue with four C, Ms. Beas?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have item four C.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash ten, Regarding Civil Rights as Required for TDA Contract Number two seven one five four one nine, Street Paving. This is four C.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, this is the grant that we received, it is from the Texas Department of Agriculture, it'll be to pave Moreland Street, Davila Street, and Lucian Lane. As part of the grant requirements, certain policies have to be approved, and I know Mr. Sett has been working with the, the agency. You do have a policy on the civil rights, excessive force, section three policy, citizens' participation, and code of conduct policy. This, this are all compliance requirements from the Texas Department of Agriculture in order for us to move forward on this project.
What's the amount of the grant?
Okay, do we have a motion?
I saw a move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second, any further discussion? Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next, Business and Orders, item four D, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash eleven, Opening a Bank Account and Designating Signatories for TDA Contract Number eight two one five four one nine, Street Paving. This is four D.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, this is part of the same grant, the state requires us to have a separate bank account, a bank account to track the monies as they are being requested for reimbursement.
I saw a move, Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, we have a second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, Business and Orders, item five, Contracts and Agreements, Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve a Lease Agreement with Ricardo Garza for Premises at four oh seven East Mirasole Streets, which C and D Lopez Tijerina Complex, five eight.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, this are the offices that were previously occupied by the EDC at the Tijerina Lopez Complex. We do have Mr. Ricardo Garza, who has given a three hundred dollar deposit, and I don't know if he's present in the audience. Yeah. He intends to open a photography business at this site.
And, and it's being leased at the normal...
Yes, sir.
For the...
That is...
Okay.
Yes.
I saw a move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second.
I saw a motion.
Okay, we have a second, any further discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next is number six, Planning, Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action on Request for Wine and Beer Retailers Off Premise License by Javier Pedraza for that ideal mini mart located at one oh one West Ash Street.
Mayor Commissioners, this action was taken by the Planning and Zoning on Monday at their special meeting. This is, when you're going on San Antonio Street North, you come up to the Y where it splits off to Kennedy Street in San Antonio. As far as the ordinance being approved by the, as far as the license being approved according to the ordinance, it met the requirements, but the site is not properly certified for occupancy, so it is kind of premature to have this right now, and this should be sent back to P and Z for further consideration.
Has somebody, has somebody explained to the owners of the situation, or what, what they need to need in order to be able to operate?
I have discussed this with the plan director and the building inspector, and they are to set a meeting with the owners, but they needed to see the actions of the council first.
My understanding is that, you know, he's been, the owner of this property, you know, I've had a discussion with him, he's been back in force since November with this, and you know, he's just waiting, he's got all his permits ready and, you know, ready to go to open, you know, he's just waiting for, for us to give him the okay, you know, I don't think that we should be holding him back, and it's a business, small business, and I know how it feels to, you know, be holding him back, you know, if the owner's only gonna have an issue with this, you know, I don't think that we should have an issue.
I, go ahead.
The beer and liquor license ordinance is, is not the issue, it is the, the occupancy of the building and the use. There are certain requirements for businesses that are going to receive people from, you know, public, and so it has to meet certain standards, as any other business would be required to do so, Commissioner Jones. If you move forward to allow this, and he gets his license, he still will not be able to occupy the building and conduct his business.
Let's see here, that's...
Because of the...
No, because of the...
The total business.
The building itself.
Buildings, yeah.
You look at some of the pictures...
For residents, and you're only looking at, you know, opening a business, and you're looking at, you know, the site plan is not in place, the ADA requirements, you're looking at parking, there's no parking there for a business, so there's different things that need to be played before you can actually open up the business, so I was gonna ask Mr. Milan, why do we, you know, go ahead and send this to the planning and zoning without having all these requirements, you know?
I don't, I don't even think that it's handicapped or accessible. Has somebody said with him, Mr. Milan, in regards to...
I think they need to employ the work to open up the business, I mean, it's, I don't think the light, the liquor license is, is an issue, I think it's the, the actual building itself that might be an issue.
Correct. We've done a couple of inspections in the past, another gentleman, he was working on his parking lot, but like you said, some of these items, as far as the building, they, you know, they can still be worked on. However, you know, still missing like the parking lot, he's got an additional restroom on the back, that, I guess due to the cost of the investment, based upon whether he does his business or not, he is to improve the parking lot and all the additional requirements that, that he needs.
So I'm looking at the light poles here, and are they gonna be using any of that as far as for the easements?
Correct. Like I said, you know, some of this, like the parking lot, the ADA investment, the, all this, it's, it's a pretty penny, and the owner is willing to comply with the building codes, however, you know, he likes to know if, you know, he's gonna get his license or not, so that he can proceed with the finishing of the building.
So then the questions, move on there, so wait till we make sure that everything is in place before we move on, and I agree with Ms. Beas, at this point would be...
Well, I think, I think what Mr. Milan is saying is that the owner wants to know that once he makes all the improvements that are necessary to be able to, for us to give him the permit to open, that if, that if the permit's gonna be issued out for him to operate, once he completes, that's what he wants to know.
Correct. Logistic is some, like some...
Even if we approve this, it's due to the requirements that have to be met before you open.
Correct, he still needs to complete his building requirements.
So, you know, what I'm saying is...
I'm gonna try to, to be frank with you, is wait until everything is complete, so that that way we can move forward accordingly, because, I mean, this here, provided that it meets the city ordinance, then, I mean, we, we move on it. However, what's more crucial is what needs to be done to make sure that the building itself is set up according to the regulations that it must be complying.
You know, it, it, my concern is that we normally hold persons that want to build a business, that they comply with all the requirements before the public starts coming in, before they start selling. You, you don't start acting on one and then another. If the city moves forward to approve the beer and liquor license, you give him a license to sell beer at this site, whether his building is in code compliance or not, will he be selling a beer out of a ice box outside until he gets his building, because it's basically giving him permission to do that?
That's a...
And that's my concern.
Which is a major issue at state.
And, and the steps should be taken like any other business that has gone through the process to do everything that needs to get done in order to open the business.
We don't want to hear that gentleman that definitely go to the business, it's just to, you know, make sure he complies with all the...
Now, if, if the gentleman needs assistance, please direct him, the EDC, and he can get assistance to those grants.
I would recommend we table the item until, you know, he follows through with the, the actual requirements to meet that qualification that gets opened up of the building.
And I, and I think, Gilbert, that you need to get with him and explain to him, it needs to happen first before he gets the permit.
Okay, so...
I saw a motion to table the item.
Okay, we have a motion to table, we have a second, any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, Business and Order is, back to seven A, Ms. Beas, City Managers Report.
That report has just been presented prior to item number four, we've taken action.
Okay.
No, sir.
Seven A, but already covered everything there. So next, Business and Orders, item eight, Executive Session, Chapter five five one, Texas Government Code five five one, that, or dot zero seven one, Consultation with Attorney in Section five five one, dot zero seven four, Personnel Matters, which is items A, B, and C. This time, it is six forty-nine, we'll be going to Executive Session. Back from Executive Session, it's seven twenty PM, and there's no, no action taken on items eight, A, B, and C, no action. This time...
Mr. Mayor, I move it, please, sir.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a second, any further discussion? No, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned, it is seven twenty PM.